Guy sitting in front of all this.
Good evening, gonna call the Lake Elmo City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025 into order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Is everybody okay with the agenda? Anything add, take away? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor in approving of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is hereby approved. This evening, we'd like to celebrate firefighter Brian Johnson. If Chief would go to the podium for presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Tonight, we can celebrate Brian Johnson, fire number 47, on his retirement from the Lake Elmo Fire Department. Brian joined the department in December of 1992, retired March 31st, 2025. He served over 32 years with our organization and served the city to the highest standards. He was a great ambassador for our fire department. He left a lasting impact on what we're doing in so many different aspects of our operations. His knowledge of our apparatus, fire ground operations and pancake recipes, has helped build this department throughout his entire career. He served as a firefighter lieutenant and last as basically our lead engineer of the department. This guy can run a truck out there with his eyes closed and hands tied behind his back and knows exactly what's going on with these things. Not only has our fire department benefited from Brian's guidance, through his knowledge and passion for the fire service, but he's also left his mark on a generation of firefighters in the East Metro through numerous trainings and so much time spent on fire scenes just operating with these folks. The contributions Brian's made to our fire department will never be forgotten and this is definitely a well-earned retirement over his time and I'm really, really happy. He's been a huge kind of guiding factor for me as a new chief here and just kind of filling me in on what the history of the department and city and really helping me out is my time too, so I definitely appreciate that as well. So with that, we honor Brian in appreciation and recognition for 32 years of dedicated service to the city of Lake Elmo and the Lake Elmo Fire Department. Congratulations. Julie's here. We're gonna get some photos of him.
I always appreciated attending city events and Brian would be there and he'd smile and do a little chit chat with me so I didn't wander around what was going on. But so somebody else in the fire department's gonna have to take up that mantle for you. All right, sounds good. Thanks. All right, next we have public comments and inquiries. I don't think we've had anybody sign up for that, okay? Approval of the minutes from June 17th, 2025. I did notice one thing in the... In the approved resolution number 2025-045, that motion passed on a four to one.
I corrected that.
You got that?
Councilmember Dragusich reached out and it's been swapped out.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Since that's been changed and there are no alterations from my standpoint, anybody else got anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the May 15th, 2025 minutes.
June 17th.
June 17th, sorry.
We are now in July.
Those ones.
Can we do a friendly minute? Make that till June 17th?
Motion to approve the minutes from June 17th.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second for June 17th, 2025 regular and special meeting minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, big long consent agenda this evening is the agenda reads approved payment of disbursements and payroll. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor approving the consent agenda item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving into our regular agenda, audit presentation. That is your cue, sir.
All right, my name is Ryan Schmidt, I'm a partner with Schlatter Winner and Company. I'm gonna walk us through the results of the 2024 audit. Am I navigating this myself as I go, I suppose? There we go. Okay, so I always like to start out with a little bit of a reminder of what exactly the purpose of an audit is and what is it that we do during an audit. So from a really high level, an audit consists of us obtaining your financial records and information from the past year, 2024. We perform a number of procedures over this information. So basically what we're doing is we're looking at the transactional data in your accounting system, the information that comes together to make the financial statements. And we're looking at support for those transactions. So we look at invoices, we look at bank statements, if we look at reports from the county and the state, all for the purpose of being able to express an opinion on whether or not we feel that your financial statements are accurate. And what we've given you this year is what's called an unmodified opinion and that is a clean opinion and the same opinion you received in prior years. Next page here, just kind of talks about how the audit went. So if there were any difficulties during the audit as far as obtaining the information we needed or if we ran into significant delays or we had any unusual accounting policies or transactions we ran across, this is where we would tell you about it. But as you can see from the page here, nothing like that was identified. Everything went very smoothly. Next page here talks about internal controls and compliance. So as part of the audit process, you know, yes, we're looking at the numbers, but we're also looking at the processes and procedures that are behind the numbers and then we also have to review certain areas for compliance with Minnesota statutes. So just working my way left to right here, starting with audit adjustments. You know, a lot of the cities we work with, we post a lot of audit adjustments. So what this means is that during the audit process, as we come across errors or things that need corrections, things that were coded improperly, we help, we make an adjustment, we make these corrections. But as you can see, you actually didn't have any significant audit adjustments, none to the point where we would consider it to be a finding or a material issue. So that's a good thing, that's better than a lot of the cities that we work with. Now the next item here, internal controls. Here we have a lack of segregation of duties. So this is one that's very common. You've seen it in the past, we've reported it in the prior years. Basically, this is saying that your accounting functions aren't segregated to the extent that's considered ideal. You do have decent segregation of duties, you do have checks and balances and oversight and controls in place, but there are still certain people who have pretty full access to the accounting system and we want you to be aware of that. And then the last item on here, a review of your compliance with Minnesota statutes. Essentially, the state gives us checklists every year that go over various areas. You know, how did you go about contracting and bidding? How do you pay and approve your bills? Where do you keep your investments in cash, et cetera? And we didn't find any instances of non-compliance there. Everything looked good. With that, we'll move into the numbers. Gonna start out by looking at the general fund and a little bit of a historical, big picture trend analysis here. So we have the general fund here, 2020 through 2024, and then the budget on the right-hand side there as well. So just really big picture, revenues did exceed budgeted amounts by about $1,007,000 and expenditures were below budgeted amounts in the general fund by about $378,000. So overall, you had budgeted for a slight decrease in your fund balance of about $43,000. Your actual increase was about $1.4 million. Now the next couple pages break down these same revenues and expenditures into greater detail and we'll kind of look at where those differences were. So this next page here shows the general fund's revenues, broken down into smaller categories. You can see taxes and assessments, of course, the largest revenue category for the general fund. And here you were basically right on budget. That was about as close as it gets. All of these, all the remainders were slightly over budget, the largest being your investment gains and losses. That was over budget about $364,000 of additional investment earnings. Intergovernmental, which is essentially your state aid, your state funding, over there by about $267,000. And then charges for services, zoning, plan check fees, et cetera, over budget there by about $140,000. Next page, same layout, but looking at expenditures broken down into greater detail. Almost every category here, you were under budget. The largest being under public safety. Here you were under budget by about $264,000. That was driven almost entirely, in fact, more than entirely by building inspection costs. So that was the driving factor there for that budgetary difference. On the left-hand side, the other one that stands out just slightly is the general government category. There you were under budget about $90,000. The rest were pretty close. Next page, still looking at just the general fund. We have the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year as a percentage of next year's budgeted expenditures. So you have a policy in place to set a target floor or minimum fund balance here for approximately 50 to 60% of the following year's budgeted expenditures. You can see you did have an increase this year and you're up to about 130%. And then the next page just shows the cash over the past five years, which this fluctuates a little bit just based on the timing of when you pay your bills and you know what kind of payables and receivables you have and you know the timing of when that comes in. So, but that held pretty steady compared to last year. All right, with that, we'll move away from the general fund. Take a quick look at a couple of your other funds kind of lumped together in larger categories here. So you have numerous funds in your full financial statements, but we're gonna look at all of your debt service funds in aggregate as well as your capital project funds in aggregate. Debt service activity here was pretty typical, pretty much what you would expect. Revenues from taxes and assessments, expenditures are your principal and interest payments on your debt. Overall, an increase in fund balance there of about $651,000 for the year. Capital project funds, this fluctuates a lot more from year to year just based on the nature of the funds, whatever projects you have going on. The revenues here consist primarily of state funding and about $1 million of park dedication fees wrapped in there as well. Expenditures, that's your capital projects, the costs for whatever projects you had going on, that's $7.1 million. That was mostly the 2024 street and utility projects and the Hudson Boulevard improvements along with various other projects. Then the other sources you see there are about $5.5 million. That's the 2024 A bond issuance and some transfers from other funds. So overall, an increase in that category of about $1.6 million. And then the next page, it shows the cash in both of those categories over the past five years. Debt service doesn't fluctuate a whole lot, that's basically what we would expect to see. And capital projects, that jumps around a little bit based on the timing of when bond proceeds come through and then when the cash is actually spent. There you had an increase of about $2.9 million for the year. With that, we'll move into your enterprise funds, your water fund, sewer fund and storm sewer fund. The first slide here looking at your water fund, the graph focuses just on operations. So this does not include some significant revenues from connection fees and any state grants, et cetera. This is basically just charges for usage and then the operating expenses. So operating revenues went down by about $415,000. You can see 2023 was a little bit of a spike and that decrease was mostly due to changes in consumption, water usage. Operating expenses also went down just slightly, about $22,000. And then the non-operating items that you see there, that non-operating revenue of $8.4 million, a good chunk of that, about 3.6, is developer contributions. So what this means is that when a development in the city is completed, the developer turns over the asset to the city and you recognize that as city infrastructure, as an asset. And when you put that on the books, you have to recognize a corresponding revenue. So it doesn't represent cash flows, but it does increase the net position of the fund. So you'll see that later when we look at the cash reach of these funds that even though you had an overall increase in that position here of $6 million, that's not representative of an increase in your cash. Next page here, same layout for the sewer fund. Here we had an increase in operating revenues of about $108,000. Operating expenses also increased, about $499,000. And then once again, the operating, non-operating revenues down at the bottom of about $5.5 million. A good portion of that is again developer contributions along with connection fees, some other items. Overall, an increase there of 3.4 for your net position. And the next page, same layout again for the storm sewer fund. Increase in operating revenues here for about $76,000. Operating expenses up about $133,000. And then that non-operating revenues, it's almost entirely developer contributions. And then for each of those three funds, we have the cash balances over the past five years. And as I mentioned, despite the increases in overall net position because of those assets that were recognized, your cash itself actually held pretty steady. Slight increase in the sewer and storm sewer funds and water utility actually decreased due to some of the outlay for capital projects. And then we have just a few slides here that look at everything really big picture wrapped together for the city as a whole. So this is the citywide assets, blue being current assets, you know, cash, receivables, things that are more short-term, and then red being your capital assets. And really the biggest change here is just the recognition of additional assets, whether it be from developers or the amounts that you've actually invested into projects. Next page, same layout, but looking at the citywide liabilities. These have actually held very steady compared to the prior year. Actually, your debt balance decreased just slightly, which is just about the only change that's shown here. And then on the following page, we have both of those shown in more of a linear fashion. And then the green is the net between the two, so you can kind of see on a net basis what's happening here. Now, of course, most of that upward trend you see in that green line is due to the capital assets and not actual liquid cash that's available. And then finally, just two slides here that show your future debt payments based on debt that was outstanding at the end of the year. So this is really just informational for you. So this isn't showing debt balances, this is showing the amount of principal and interest that's due each year until all of the debt is paid off. So the first page here for governmental funds, this is debt that's being financed primarily by property taxes and special assessments. And then the next page is your proprietary fund debt, your water sewer, storm sewer funds. Any questions?
Questions, yeah, Councilmember Holtz.
Thank you, Ryan, for all of that. Question on the water revenue side. I recall having this conversation before, but did you see something similar from other cities because of summer '24 being a wet summer, therefore people purchased less water?
Yeah, you know, the decrease here was a little more significant than what I saw at most cities. It fluctuates a lot from city to city, but yeah, I would say it was a little more pronounced here. But it did look like 2023 was a bit of a spike here compared to previous years.
And it was a dry, it was a dry summer.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's the billing structure, you know, some cities, you know, kind of change the structure up with watering lawns and that sort of thing. Or maybe for industries, they have, you know, for the businesses in town, they have a different rate structure. So it's really hard to compare to different cities. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Move to accept the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Support.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Holtz.
Kudos to staff and for obviously Ryan and your staff for helping us. As much as it's annually required anyway by statute, it's something that residents do care about and they need to see this firsthand. This is several years in a row now where there's nothing being observed for a mistake, intentional or otherwise. And that, I mean, that is the first expectation when it comes to our finance, so I'm glad to see that happening again. And just for all who are watching, yes, that second piece, the IC of duplication and segregation of duties, there is not a city in Minnesota of our size that doesn't have that happen. That is the norm and it will always happen for a city of our size. And I have full confidence that we do have the policies and procedures in place to make sure that it is a risk, but that doesn't cause any harm. But thank you for that presentation.
Any other discussion? All right, there's a motion on the floor. Call the question, all those in favor accepting 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next on the list is the I-94 lift station enforcement improvements, authorize purchase of new pumps.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item, I've been before you with the I-94 lift station enforcement improvements here a couple of times. Last meeting when we authorized advertisements and approval, there was a... I did tease this item and the issue was that when we started the process for the analysis of the lift station and the force main, we weren't sure if we were gonna need new pumps or not. It was gonna kind of depend on the size of the new force main. And through that analysis, it was determined that the city does indeed need new pumps for this lift station to operate with the force main out of the gate. Pardon me, so before you this evening is an item to authorize the purchase of these new pumps. Just a little background again, the failing force main that runs Hudson Boulevard across Inwood Avenue to connect to the Met Council discharge location was analyzed earlier this summer. It was, it's been recommended that we upsize the force main from an eight inch to a 16 inch to accommodate the final ultimate discharge scenario. And as a result of that, we do need these three new pumps. So without spending a ton of time tonight going through everything, because we've been through this a couple of times, we are asking that council authorize purchase of these new flight pumps. Flight is the brand that Public Works has exclusively in town. They're what we use. So with that, I'm asking council to approve a motion to authorize the purchase of three new flight pumps for the I-94 lift station. We're estimating it's $175,000 or $170,000.
Is that a not to exceed $170,000?
It's, yes, yes, we'll go that route. And if for some reason we come in higher, Mr. Mayor, when we need to do any sort of installation or reprogramming, then those costs will be brought to council.
Okay. Councilmember Holtz?
What happens with the pumps after the project? Is there any utility for them for future purposing as needed? Do we put them back on the market at a lower price or what do we do with them?
The existing pumps you're talking about that are in the lift station today?
The three that are being purchased for... Oh, the...
They'll stay there.
Oh, I thought these were just meant for some of the temporary, okay. Dumb question, no.
No, 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 it's not a dumb question at all. The existing pumps will be, there is a salvage value that will, that Public Works will take those pumps and try to get some back for them.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to authorize a purchase of three flight pumps for the I-94 lift station within the authorized $170,000 project budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to authorize the purchase of three new flight pumps for the I-94 lift station within the authorized $170,000 project budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Number five is the adoption of pavement management plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here to present the pavement management...
Here to present the pavement management plan after, as following up from the twenty twenty-five street ratings. So we rerated the streets this year and then refreshed the pavement management plan that was last adopted in twenty twenty-three. So just a quick history, we've, the city first rated all of the streets in twenty twelve using a, a manual recording system and cartograph. And then in twenty sixteen, we moved to Goodpoint technology, which is more of a robotic camera van system that does the inventory of the entire street network and rates the streets as we go through. We then rated the streets in twenty twenty-one to, to update those. And then following the twenty twenty-one street ratings, then in twenty twenty-three, we came back, and that was the first time we actually formalized pavement management plan around those ratings. So staff had been obtaining these ratings and using that for our maintenance decisions and, and data into that. But we didn't have a formalized main, pavement management plan. So that was first adopted by the council in twenty twenty-three. And one of the recommendations from the twenty twenty-three pavement management plan was to identify that we would reassess the, the pavement conditions every four years. So that brings us here today. We went out for proposals, we hired Goodpoint technology again to rerate the streets, and we just got those back. And then with that, we've updated the pavement management plan. So I want to talk a few things about the background, and then I'll get into presenting the outcome of that. But you want to keep in mind that ratings is a detailed surface condition assessment, so it's really a visual of what's on the surface. So there's a lot, it's just one data point, and it's a, it's a good data point to use in your payment management, but it's just one. It doesn't tell you if the, if the streets are draining well, it doesn't tell you if the underlying soil conditions are in good shape. There's a lot of things it doesn't tell you, but it's a good starting place. It's a good measurement metric tool for the city to use to see how you're doing and, and maintaining your payments throughout the, the network. And so it's a payment condition index, it's a scale of one to a hundred. Every street is, is scored on that, one to a hundred. And it's a widely accepted methodology that's accepted by the American Public Works Association and American Society of Testing the Materials. So I always like, whenever I'm talking about Lake Elmo streets, I always like to show this slide. I started showing this years ago, and it's, it's a good perspective slide. And what it's telling you is, I'm looking at Lake Elmo in twenty thirteen with a population of eighty-one seventy-seven, and you had seventy miles of street. And so I just did simple metric of people per mile, and you have a hundred and seventeen people per street mile. In twenty twenty-five, I just updated that based on what I, for your population and your miles of street, we're at ninety-seven now, so you got a hundred and forty-two people per street mile. And then I listed some of the surrounding communities that I did the same metric. Now, I didn't, I did this in twenty twenty-three, I didn't update the other communities. The exact numbers are really unimportant here. The important part is to show that it's part of the character of this community in that we have a large mass of land that is rural in nature, and so we have a lot of large lots. And so the whole point of this slide is just to show you that we're, we have to pay to maintain these ninety-seven miles of roadway, and we have less people to pay for them. So you're, you have about half, you know, you, you have two times the, the number of miles of road per person in your, in your city. So that is something, you know, it's not, I'm not saying it's bad or good, it's just a reality that, that's good to keep in a perspective. And then I like to talk about the types of streets because we had sort of the pre-growth Lake Elmo when we did a lot of the OP developments. And what the roads that were being built is the section that you're seeing here, where you had, whatever width the road was, you're basically going in and building a, say, a six to eight inch depth of roadway of gravel with bituminous through two to three inches of bituminous on top and using bituminous curb. What you have to understand is garbage trucks, the larger vehicles that pound those pavements at, at sensitive times when you have moisture and freeze thaw going on in your roadways, those wheel impact loads push down three feet. And so you only have, you know, less than a foot of pavement section. So you're really relying on the underlying in situ soils to provide strength to support your roads. And because those soils were never disturbed, or they're natural soils, they weren't engineered soils when they were first constructed, they tend to be much more variable. So that's where you'll see soft spots, you'll have some roads, parts of those roads that will fail, some hold up very well. And so it's really dependent on what those in situ soils are. And so even today, when we come back and we tell you we're doing a reclaim or a low cost reclaim, we're still only cutting that top eight inches and putting a roadway back on there. Now, over time, hopefully, the road is, any movement in those roads are settling and, and stabilizing, and hopefully they give you more life the second go around. But you still are susceptible to silts and clays in those soils, so if water gets into the surface, then when you get that freeze thaw action and you have a lot of silts in there, you'll have areas where you get a lot more movement and the road will crack and fail earlier. So that's just, it's, it's not a wrong street design, it's just the way streets were designed back then. There's some cities that still design them that way, so it's, it's just a type of roads that we're dealing with. And so when you think about the OP rural areas, these are what your roads are mostly made of. And what we are doing is replacing the bituminous curb when we go in and do the reclaims today. The other kind of road is what I call the new city standard, and basically starting off with Savona in twenty thirteen, an all-new development that, that the city, the, the development standards we're giving the city is there's a much thicker road section. It's either a twelve to twenty-four inch sand section that we're putting in there below. It's an engineered soil, it's a uniform specified sand material that's a drainage layer, it provides structure, it, it's silt-free, so if water gets in there, two things happen. One, it's less susceptible to freeze thaw and heaving, and then it's also we have drain tile on, on the, in the road beds, so the water that would get in there gets through the sand layer, gets into the drain tile, and gets dispersed out. So these are a much more robust road, and these are the roads that I call the fifty-year roads. These are, these, the, the bituminous surface isn't going to give you fifty years by any means, but the, the underlying structure is going to be there for a long time, and you'll just have to deal with redoing the, the top part or the bituminous part over time. So we will be getting, the, the first Savona roads went in in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. When we get to that twenty, twenty-five year life cycle on those roads, we're going to get into a lot of just milling overlays or very thin reclaims that we have to do, and we won't have to go down into that structure. So costs will, improvements will, are, you'll see your CIP move to these types of overlays as sort of the, the way to go. So on to where are we at with our current pavement condition report? I'm putting them side by side here. It was actually, there's a little confusion in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three that I'm saying here. The ratings were done in twenty twenty-one, but the Icon software we use to manage that does project the roads forward, so in some ways I call them, sometimes you'll see me catch, catch me calling them the twenty twenty-three ratings, sometimes the twenty twenty-one, but there, it's where we were at before. And this is putting the roadways in the different buckets. So we have these categories of the PCI category, anything at eighty-five to a hundred, we call excellent. Anything from seventy to eighty-four, we're calling good. And then we have a fair category is the green category, poor, and, and failing are the red and blue. And so in twenty twenty-three, you can see we had seventy-eight percent in the good to excellent category, which is a pretty good rating. A lot of cities strive for an average PCI in the eighties. Our average in twenty twenty-three was eighty-three, and then, and you had seventy-eight percent of your roads in that category. And then you had a larger percent in the, in the failing to poor, which really are the streets you don't want to do maintenance on anymore. Those are the ones you want to get into the CIP for reconstruction projects. The green categories are ones you can generally do a milling overlay, you can do things to continue to carry that pavement forward and renew it a little bit to defer that, that reconstruction project. And now you can see in twenty twenty-five, eighty-eight percent of our roadways are in the good to excellent category. So on a map, again, I put the two maps side by side. It's a little maybe hard to read, hopefully, you can kind of, the, the red is designed to try to pop out to you as the, the failing roads. But again, it, it, it doesn't do any good if you live on the failing roads to, to see that the overall city's eighty-eight, right? So it's a, if you're, you're, there's still a few neighborhoods that we need to get to. You can see on the twenty twenty-one rating map, over in the northeast corner, there was a lot more red, we've now done those projects, those were our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four street improvement projects, so those neighborhoods are now, now been addressed. I will say for the twenty twenty-five rating and the data we're presenting to you, we've already overrode the rating system for the twenty twenty-five project. So we put in here that the streets that we're doing today in twenty twenty-five are already improved, so that's the assumption in the, in the data that we're presenting. The other thing that's notable that pops off here when I, when I review these maps is, again, this is a surface rating, so this is a computerized system, cameras looking at the surface of the road. And I'll, I'm going to call your attention to.
Tapestry?
Tapestry. So if you look at twenty twenty-one, those roads looked in decent shape, they were between a seventy to eighty-four rating. And now you skip to twenty twenty-five, and all of a sudden, you see a failing road already. So, so what happened there? Sorry, I got these in the wrong order, but that didn't work. So what happened with tapestry was you look back and we seal coated the road in twenty twenty, so the rating that happened in twenty twenty-one was being masked by that fresh seal coat that was being put on. It was only a year old, it was masking and hiding some of the, the deficiencies and cracks in the road. So it, it came out with a higher rating than, than what was really there. And so as soon as seal coat wears off, now the, the, the true colors of that road are shining through, and, and that's telling us that that road was in a little worse shape than, than we had been led to believe. So that's why, again, I emphasize, this is one data point in everything we have to use in analyzing the streets. On the flip side, if you look up at Sanctuary, Sanctuary back in twenty twenty-one showed failing roads and roads in the lowest categories, and now they actually look in not too bad a shape in twenty twenty-five, well, they just got a seal coat last year. So they're now, they're now being masked. So you do have to look at other things like age of pavement and, and so forth. So the age of pavement in Tapestry was a two thousand five construction, Sanctuary was a two thousand six construction, they're both coming due soon, and, and they'll, they're, they do show up in your CIP, and so we'll probably discontinue doing future maintenance to them till we get to those reconstruction projects.
I think it also shows you that a little bit of the preventative maintenance that you do.
It also buys you some time.
Will buy you some time and extend the life of that pavement a little bit longer before you need to get into that.
That's correct.
Milling overlay.
So you're not supposed to read this, but in this pavement management report that we are publishing, there's an inventory, it's, I think it's nine pages long, it's every street segment with the actual rating in there, so that's part of the document that's, that's being published. And then in that current condition report, we do a summary of the high level. So the average condition for today's streets is, is an eighty-eight point six or an eighty-nine. The overall rating was eighty-three in twenty twenty-three, so you had a, a six-point increase in the overall rating of your average PCI. If you look at the historical, right there, you can see we've gone from seventy-three in twenty sixteen up to eighty-nine, so we're continuing to improve that number. And then other network PCI indicators, we do the same average PCI, but we break it down by street type a little bit for your benefit. And you can see the local streets, you know, went, increased from eighty-two to eighty-seven. The collector MSA roadways increased from an eighty-two to a ninety. And then we break it down by roads with curb and without curb. That also speaks to kind of where they are in the city for the rural nature or newer areas. And that's where you see the biggest, the biggest change. You see the, the roads with curb, which are your newer designs, have concrete curb, you're at a ninety-six, and the roads with no curb, mostly due to age, are at a seventy-four. This is just a summary, you've seen this one back in twenty twenty-three, but in the report, the report talks about the different treatment strategies that we employ. So we employ crack sealing, we employ seal coating, milling overlay, full-depth reclamation, and reconstruction. And so the report has a write-up on each of those of when we use them and why we use those. It also reports, and we updated the average cost, so you can see from a seal coat down to a reconstruction, how the costs progressively get more expensive on a square foot basis. And that's been repub, that's been updated as well. And then this is a, just, this is straight out of MinDOT manuals and things like that, pavement life cycle that, that talks about the importance of street maintenance, and it really just shows you the life of a street over a twenty-six year period, how it's following a deterioration curve and when that pavement needs to be renewed. And if you don't do anything, this is what happens to your pavement, it just deteriorates to eighteen, nineteen years and, and then needs to be reconstructed. And then this is that same curve, if you are committed to a series of crack sealing, seal coating, and overlays on a periodic basis, how you can extend that roadway's, roadway's life. So that's the, the whole purpose of, of the whole pavement management plan and programming that we're, that we're embarking on. And then this is the maintenance schedule that we adopted in twenty twenty-three, we did not change that in this report. So it, it starts with two, that, that new street standard versus the, the open space development roadway standard is a little bit different, but you can see it's crack sealing in year three, once you have a new pavement surface, and, or crack sealing and seal coating, and then making sure you're crack sealing every three years. The one thing I will say is, is the science around this is changing all the time, there's lots of cities experimenting with different things, we're continuing to watch and monitor what other people are doing, what kind of success they're having or not. And the one thing we find in Lake Elmo that we do often is, even though it says seal coat every, every six years after that first one, the first one in three years, and then it's every six years after that, it's actually quite frequently that we go out there and we drive those streets the year before it's due for the seal coat, and we back off and we only crack seal. So we, we're seeing, when you seal coat over a seal coat, we're seeing less or diminished success, and sometimes it's just not needed. Sometimes that first seal coat is holding well and doesn't need, doesn't need another one, and sometimes the other one can do more damage than good. And then other times, we're seeing a lot of success out of doing that seal coat. So we are, we have this schedule that we're following, but that's when we're looking at, we go to program that road, but then we do back off some of them and don't, don't do the second seal coat if it's not need, not being based on a visual inspection at that time.
This question, I know one thing that, something in the industry is looking at is pavement rejuvenators that get done like the same year or the fall of the wear course, just in the advent of construction of the, the pavement and the heat of it that comes out burns off some of the emulsion from it, or at least that's, that's the theory in place, and then the rejuvenator is supposed to insert that back into the pavement. I, I know that there's been some research on that, but it would be nice to see if that's, if that actually, I, I have done the research on it, but if that actually does help, I know that there are some, I think Woodbury's maybe done a little bit of it. I, I know I saw a street being done, any Dyna with it. It would like, be nice to see if there's any, you know, in, in place of the crack sealing in the third year, if that gives us any life expend, or the, the seal coating in the third year gives us any extra life on that.
And there's, and there's several of those different techniques that are being tried, we're trying to give it some time to watch how they perform.
Yeah.
Over the next several years after, we were aware of some of the communities that are doing some of this stuff, so.
Yeah, I think.
We're letting them be the guinea pig.
That's prudent, but yeah, just something to look at.
Yep. We also found that we're having more success with our seal coats than some of our neighbors, and I, I think part of that is that trap rock we use instead of the P rock, and it's just a good spec that seems to hold up. So we're not seeing, we're seeing some of the same stuff other communities are that are backing away from it, but not to the degree, to the degree they are. We're still seeing more benefit out of the seal coat than, than others. So pavement management, you look at your maintenance, but it also rolls into your CIP. So published in this pavement management plan is also the, the ten-year CIP. This is not an adopted document by any means, but this is the twenty twenty-six, the twenty This is not an adopted document by any means, but this is the 2026 to 2035 CIP that we've turned in for this year for council review. You'll see the presentation on that next workshop. But we did do some adjustments based on getting the, the data back just last month for the 2025 street, Tapestry being an example of, of that. So there are some, there was some shifting of priorities a little bit. We sat down with Public Works and we looked at where we were at and, and moved things around a little bit. And so we break it down into three categories. The light blue is your, basically your neighborhood streets. The orange color is the Collector MSA streets. And then the green is not our streets. It's county cost participation. So that's, that's just us paying our share of whatever the county's doing. And in the lower right hand, or lower left-hand side, that's the summary of the numbers. So the total 10-year cost that we turned in now is 47.6 million. Two years ago, that was 61.5 million. So it's coming down a little bit with less projects projected to the next 10 years. And then you can see it broken down by that local street, the Collector Street and the county cost participation categories. So they're all down a little bit from what they were two years ago. And then we have the estimated MSA funding over the next 10 years is about 12 million. And the estimated assessment revenue on those residential street projects would be 8 million. So you're looking at 47.6 million in total costs over the next 10 years. And you're looking at 20 million in revenue on, not revenue, but assessment revenue and MSA revenue sources. So you're looking at 20, you know, 2.7 million per year on average over the 10 years. But this is the street capital improvement plan map. We mapped where those improvements are by year over the, the new payment rating map. And then on the right-hand side, you have the previous payment map. And all those hexagons with done in it are all the projects you took on in just the 2023, 2024 and 2025. So it shows you that there's a, a lot of neighborhoods we attacked. Several of those were funded through the grant funds as we were putting water in neighborhoods and Stillwater Lane and so forth. So a lot of projects were taken care of in the last three, three years. So the findings of the report, you currently have 97, 98 miles of roadway, 27 miles of new street since 2013. Your average PCI rating has gone up to 89. It represents a street network that's in good, excellent condition. The PCI rating falls to 74.7 for those streets with no curb. So those show up in your CIP is the streets that we'll be addressing there. 88% of the streets are in good or excellent cat, uh, category. That's up from 78%. And then you have 6.5% of the streets in the fair category. Those are streets, those are opportunities that we can look closer at and maybe do mill and overlays and continue to defer maintenance on those roadways another eight to 10, 12 years. 5.5% of the streets are in poor or failing categories. And then the later year, uh, years of the CIP are based on payment aging and reflect streets that are in currently good condition. And what I mean by that is on the CIP in year 2035, that last year out there, we have DeMontreville Highlands area programmed for CIP. If you look on the map up there, the map is in the best category. It's in a good category. If you look in the 2023, it looks like they were ma- the ratings are masked a little bit by a seal coat, but they still were in good shape then. So we're, we're asked to do a 10-year CIP and we're just programming that based on those, that roadway was done back in 2011. And by the time you get to 2035, you're probably gonna be seeing that deteriorated. So it's done by aging, not by your PCI.
Well, you could look at that from a potential degradation curve, right?
Yeah.
And say that that's where like, where it's likely gonna land.
Yeah. And I just wanted to point that out because if you're just looking at the map, you'll, why, why is that in the CIP when it's showing that the road's in good shape? So the recommendations are to implement the street maintenance and rehabilitation in accordance with our generalized cycle maintenance and rehabilitation schedule. Continue to rate our streets every four years. So the next time would be 2029. We continue to maintain an annualized street maintenance budget in the amount of 600,000 over the next 10 years. That's for seal coating, crack sealing and mill and overlays. We do, uh, every year, it might be 400,000 one year and 800,000 the next year. It's never gonna be 600,000. So we, we try to create that street fund so that we can balance that and make the right decisions rather than try to back into a budget. We're, as I mentioned before, we're continuing to investigate alternative maintenance treatments and replace the multiple seal coat treatments. So we're watching carefully what our neighbors are doing in some of the trials. Implement the street capital improvement plan to address the 5% plus streets that are remaining in poor condit- condition and to anticipate the continued failing pavements by aging. Continue to use the full depth reclamations with new concrete curb and gutter. When we address those streets, they're in the fair category or, or below. And when the soil, underlying soils support that. And then as, the number six is, is talking about that future where we, the full depth reclamations without having to do concrete curb and gutter and doing it, or doing a mill and overlay is going to be, it's a technique we're not using yet that we will be using when we get to those new streets in about 20 years. So, um, and then I think we'll see annualized cost going down in today's cost. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Jack? Councilmember Hearn.
Yes, back to the last slide. So with the, the maintenance budget of that 600,000, is there any type of modeling that can be done where if we say, you know, if we actually would increase that budget item to 1 million versus 600,000, that yeah, even though we're spending more on the budget of maintenance, the long-term capital projects we're spending less, is that, is that possible to model that out?
It is. And that's what the ICON program does that. And in 2023, we ran that model. And that's where we came up with the 600,000. And it showed in 2023 that over 10 years, if we spend the 600,000, the ratings will drop from 83 to 80. So you, not dropping much at all.
Sure.
And that's where you're, you're looking at that. If you, if you drop that number to 400,000, it might show your average index dropping into the 70s or something like that. If you spent a million, it might show you going into the 90s. So that model does exist. We haven't ran the model based on the 2025 ratings because we just got those back. But it is something we still intend to do as a follow-up and on a, on a check on that dollar.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah.
So in, in looking to approve this payment management, we're not actually approving a CIP here. That will be done at a future meeting.
Yes.
This is just the CIP that develops from the plan and we'll be discussing it in detail on our CIP.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just one more question.
Go for it.
And you mentioned it about, you know, like your comment of, you know, if the citywide average is 88 or 89, that doesn't really mean a lot to the person who has the rating of 10 on their street. And then I know you have the, the stat of, I think it was about 6% are in that, the, the poor condition. As far as for maybe comparables to other cities or standards, I don't, I feel like we had this discussion, but I don't know if we have anything in the management plan of where we want to make sure that we're not allowing that number to get above a certain threshold. I don't know if there's comparables to other cities that you're aware of.
There are, because a lot of cities do this, but some use different rating systems too. So, but in general, like I said, the, the typical cities are targeting an average PCI in somewhere between 80 and 90. That's where most of them are gonna be. And we're, we're well within that. I don't, I don't know that they have targets for every category. Because the categories you choose can vary too.
Maybe so, just something to be mindful of.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a, it's really a tool to understand where you're at and where you need to prioritize. On those lower rating streets, you want to use that as an indicator not to go spend your maintenance dollars unless you think you have a technique that can extend the life of that and defer that, that asset. But once they get into that poor and failing condition, that's where the reconstruction's needed. And you, you want to stop spending the maintenance dollars. You want to spend the maintenance dollars keeping the good pavements good because that'll give you a longer life on those and defer the construction on that.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the payment management plan update dated July 2025.
Support.
You have a motion and a second. Just a couple of comments. I think getting back to council member Hearn's question, if you just look at, was it, is that Highland Estates that we're doing next year? What's the one across from near the Tablin area off of?
Heights, Lake Elmo Heights.
Lake Elmo Heights. Shows that that's really falling apart, right? So that's on, on the list to bring that back up and then next year it'll show good. And I don't know that cities generally say we don't want to be above something. They, they don't want to be below, you know, 75 or something like that. And it all depends on that's, that's really a policy decision that the council can take up to and say, you know, we're okay with 75, 80, 85, whatever. So just to note, you know, that $600,000 over the next 10 years, that's generated based off what we have today. When North Star Development comes in, that adds another two miles. When Limerick comes in, that adds another two miles. When pieces of other development come in, you're just adding mileage. So based on, you know, the formula that they're looking at, that 600,000 might go to, say, $700,000 based on your increase in mileage within that 10-year span. Just to maintain the roadways that you have on an overall infrastructure piece. Councilmember Jaksic.
That's a good point, Mayor, in terms of the maintenance of the streets. I- i- if you look forward and having just a little experience, not as much as Jack, of course, but you find out the $600,000 is the best money we will ever spend. It saves millions and millions of dollars. Do nothing, let it go, the heck as the graph showed. Now you can spend $200,000 a, a block fixing it up as opposed to $10,000 a block maintaining it every so many years. So that's money well spent. And if our road mileage goes up and our program says we should up our, our maintenance levy to 700,000, we'd be crazy not to do that because it's the best interest of our residents and businesses and saves them money.
I think also when we look at the North Star, some of the development, the Muse area, where it is labeled medium density, high density, right? So that people per mile should get better and better as time goes on, right? We're not gonna really see that in our more rural areas that should stay the same. But in the, in the area that's, that's deemed by the comp plan to, to grow, we'll, we'll have more people and it'll be, uh, it'll be more people per mile that way.
It'll, it'll bring the metric down.
Yeah, it'll be the metric down. So I think that's a good thing in our favor with regards to the payment management plan as well. Councilmember Holtz.
I think this remains one of the, one of the best things that's happened with this city the last couple of years that, that we've been on council, between making the CIP 10 years, being able to get the $3M out, this. I mean, this is such a, a long-term value gain to have this program, to be able to show the numbers in an objective way, to know that the dollars are being used to save money in the long term and to have objective information. We can tell residents, here is how those dollars are used and why in a sequential formula, year by year. I mean, that, the fact that it wasn't happening before, that's another story, but it's happening now and it is good. So thank you for this.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is, I think this is great. You know, I made my question, I, I, I didn't, I wasn't trying to say that I think it should be less. If anything, I'm thinking if, you know, potentially more. For me, I see that graph, being a non-engineer, and to me, it looks like, well, why do we even stop the maintenance? You know, all of a sudden it drops. Like, why do, why do we stop there? I'm sure there's an engineering reason when it gets to a certain point, you know, it's just, it, it's gonna exponentially drop. So that, that was my comment on that. It's like, you know, you look at that graph, it looks like we should maintain it beyond where it starts to get down into that little bit of red.
The answer is that underlying structural support.
See, engineer, I knew there was an engineering.
You can't see it, but that, that starts to degrade and then you gotta reinforce it and then you bring it back to.
So I think that's great. And I think just, I think you made a, uh, some really good points too. I know we've had some of the conversations with some of the recent road work of the, the lifespan of the roads. And, you know, yes, like that, the graph shows that if we don't do anything at all, it'll last 26 years. I'm guessing that's, if we don't do anything on kind of like the newer standard road with curbs, but that doesn't mean, you know, the, the road isn't completely beat up into that red zone. That was showing that closer to the 16 to 17 years already.
Right.
So I think that was something that really stood out to me and I think is important for people to see, you know, as we're going through this. And your point of this is just a data point. It's not everything. But it's just, it's, it's one data piece that we can use to at least make some good assessments as we look forward here.
I, I think when you look at the assets of a city, we're taking care of one of the most expensive assets that a city can have. And my experience in looking around at other cities that implement a payment management plan, our numbers are really good overall, right? I think that to the, to the layman that drives a car like, well, the street's a street. Well, when you let roads go to the place where you're dodging potholes with your vehicle, when you can maintain them to a level people are reducing the amount of, of maintenance on their vehicles with, I don't know, brakes, shocks, tires, all those things. It's, it's a little bit, right? But any little bit helps in, in my, in my estimation. So.
This is great.
I, this, nice report, Jack. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. This is great. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the payment management plan update dated July 2025. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Project management plan's adopted. Council reports. Councilmember Jaksic.
No report.
Councilmember Holtz.
The, uh, well, July 4th Kids Parade, I'm sure you'll talk about as well, will be on July 4th. And I just wanted to mention that, because this has been, every year it's grown and grown, just like Light Up Lake Elmo. But it needs to be known that those events do not happen without volunteers. And Connect Lake Elmo is the reason, along with our staff, with the fire department, along with Public Works, along with law enforcement, why these events happen. So please, when you see messages out there saying, hey, there's volunteer opportunities, please read those. Please pass it on. There's op- there's always gonna be opportunities, whether it's for this event, whether it's for Light Up Lake Elmo, whether it's for other things as well. Please take the time to look at those messages. Because again, these events will not happen without volunteers. So please don't presume that others will do it if you don't. Please take the time if you are able.
Thanks for that. Last week I was able to attend League of Minnesota Cities with staff. It was well done. It was nice to hang out with, with most of them. No, all of them. I'm just joking. There was some, some good lessons there and breakout sessions. And it was good just to, to create some camaraderie amongst the, the staff. I did receive an email this afternoon from a scoutmaster. So I just wanted to give out a shout out to the fire department for hosting, Mr. Malender and his staff for showing them some first aid. He thought they'd kind of get maybe, you know, a little bit of a dog and pony show. But he said that the firemen went beyond his expectations. He was very happy. And I think that sometimes those things go unnoticed to council and staff because we're not there. We, we don't see that happening. And so I just wanted to give a special shout out based on the email from, because we don't always get those emails that are, are nice and complimentary, right? So, so when we get them, I like to showcase that. So thank you very much. Councilmember Hearn.
No report.
No report.
Well, it's just.
Staff.
Yeah. Just wanted to echo what the mayor said about attending the league conference. So thank you to the council for, you know, investing in our professional development. And thanks to the staff that went because while we were there, the work did not stop. So I know they had extra work when they got back. That's it.
Julie? Anything? No? Director Powers?
Uh, well, two is close.
Uh, well, two is close, we're, we've had it on every day now, we just fine-tuning some hiccups, maybe tomorrow.
Okay. Chief?
We have just a few more days left of our paid-on-call recruitment, we hosted an info session tonight that was well-attended, we had about fifteen people come by tonight, so applications close, uh, next Monday, the seventh.
No report?
No report. No report?
No report.
So the parade is, I just got to ask the parade, ah, you're putting me on the spot.
What time?
Hang on. I'd, I'd be in trouble with my wife since she's been putting a lot of time and effort into this.
You would so be in trouble.
The parade start time is, is ten AM, and to Councilmember Holtz's comment about volunteering, even if you can just give one or two hours, I know there's some setup on Thursday evening, and again, I know that, uh, Director Powers and Chief Kales and the Sheriff's Department have been involved to make sure that we have, you know, a safe route, that we've got signs up for things that are closed, we're just, uh, I know that they need some face painting help, otherwise kids won't get their face painted if somebody wants to volunteer for that. And, uh.
You think I'm an artist?
Yeah, any, any, anybody can paint a kid's face, well, maybe except for Councilmember Hearn.
I, I did do it last year, and the, the other line was significantly longer.
The parade activities are from ten fifteen to twelve thirty, you know, there'll be some minnow races there, I think there's going to be a dunk tank there. You can come dunk the mayor and any other council members that want to get in the dunk tank. Fire department will be there, so it's always a good time, the Rotary gives out free ice cream at the end of it, which is always yummy and tasty. So I encourage you to attend and get a little Americana in you on the Fourth of July, so. With that, I'm going to adjourn this evening's meeting at eight oh eight.
Well, Matt, what were you drawing?
Well, I see, I thought I was doing a decent job.
We, we just take you too long?
He's going to do red, white, blue.